All rise please for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening everyone. We'll begin tonight with public audience. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Thank you. Well, we're pleased to be here tonight to hear a great presentation on our marketing action plan. I want to thank Hiram Peck for his guidance on implementing this marketing plan idea. It's really set a blueprint for Simsbury's future and how we can leverage our existing businesses and attract new businesses. And this is really, really valuable information for any business in town and for the town's future goals. And we're really pleased tonight to have Peter Fairweather here who's done a great job in meeting with our elected officials and our staff and business community and had a number of public forums to really focus on some exciting opportunities for our town and our community. So with that, I'd just ask Hiram if he wants to give a brief introduction and then we'll move right to the meat of the plan.
Sure, just very briefly Mary. We're fortunate enough this afternoon to have Peter be able to make a presentation and a brief discussion about this topic on SCTV this afternoon. So if you have a chance tonight and you can't sleep, you know, when you go home. This is a study, this is phase one of what originally was proposed as a two-phase implementation and marketing action study, as you see. I think Peter's gained a lot of insight in talking to the businesses around town. We have had a number of public forums and invited as many people as we could to come and participate in those. I think he has some interesting insights. And some of this, some people may say, "Well, there's really nothing new here." But a fresh set of eyes at a new time, I think, gives us a new perspective and a modern launching pad to talk about what we do in the economic development world under the new normal. So without anything further ado, I'd turn it over to Peter and let him give you a presentation.
Great, thanks Hiram.
Thank you, Hiram. And what we'll do is we'll walk through the, sort of, the highlights of the study and then any questions or comments, we'd have to take those. You know, the overview of the project, and one way to summarize this is realizing Simsbury's commitment to high-quality economic development. And the study's intended to attract new business to the community while assisting existing enterprises by creating an action agenda and marketing tools. And there are two phases to the entire project. We're going to talk about the first phase, which was the analysis and the strategic positioning, and then we'll talk a little bit about what would be involved in the implementation of this. It'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the steering committee members who helped with reviewing some of the documents and making context for us. Mark Denning, who is here, Lou George, Sarah Nielsen, who's in the back, Ed Pabich, and Hiram Peck. So, you know, I want to give my thanks to them, and also I have an unofficial tour guide that was very helpful in getting oriented to Simsbury. Yeah, so the process we were involved is, you know, was the community outreach, and this sort of describes, there was a community meeting in May, we did interviews with a whole variety of folks, these are just kind of the highlights. We had a Main Street Realtors meeting on the 7th, which Sarah arranged, which was very helpful, really, again, very enjoyable. We also did some economic analysis, and I'll just hit a couple of these things. Just, I don't expect you to be able to read the small chart. You know, we started to look at what are the industries that are in high concentration in Hartford County, for example, and how that would fit into what Simsbury has possible. And you can see in red there, the measure, this is called the location quotient, indicates finance, manufacturing, and transport are industries with a fairly high concentration in Hartford County. One of the things that came out in the first, one of the first meetings, and I think it was actually Mary that said, "You should look at Fairfield County in terms of thinking about Simsbury." And hold that in mind, because if you look at the industries that are of high concentration in Fairfield County, information, finance, real estate, professional services, that's, you know, we're going to come back to those kinds of businesses in a way, in terms of looking at Simsbury. Because there's ways in which Simsbury is a little different from the larger Hartford area, especially when you're talking about the inner-city Hartford area. That's the state the obvious. The other thing we were looking at, this is not quite, either of my glasses aren't as good as they used to be, or that's not quite in focus, but, you know, thinking about it in terms of what's going on in Connecticut, you know, the state has identified some key target industries for its efforts, insurance and financial services naturally, aerospace and advanced manufacturing, bioscience, and green technologies. And as you'll see as we go through this, the aerospace and advanced manufacturing and related services are something that really, in a way that surprised me, is something that's really going to be important, I think, in both the present time at Simsbury and in the future. We also did a shift share analysis, and to earn my consulting wings, I'll walk you through this. You know, what that does is it breaks down the increase in unemployment, and this is just an example, you know, if you're looking at, for example, 2000 to 2005, you can see there's an increase in employment in some sector somewhere in the world. And there's three components of it that you look at in shift share analysis. The local shift, which is how much of the growth is due to strength in the local economy versus the overall economy. The industry mix, how much of the change is due to the strength of a particular industry in the region? You know, the best example is for Hartford, you know, and for all of Connecticut, financial services has had problems for 10 years. And the problems were had to do more with the industry than with Connecticut, you know, it's just everywhere that was a problem. So there's a question where the type of industry you have can affect growth. And then lastly, you know, how much comes from the overall growth in either the metropolitan area or the national area and so on. So we did a variety of these shift share analyses, and this kind of gives the result when we looked at over the last 10 years' worth of data that were available. I'll start in the lower half, the red square is a place where there's a negative local share, and that is that the local economy doesn't seem to be growing as well as the other, the rest of the economy, in this case, the state or the Hartford. And the industries are doing, nationally are doing worse than the rest of the economy. And in this situation, construction, retail trade, wholesale trade, information, finance, insurance are ones where there's, you know, that this is, the location isn't a strong location, the industry as a whole are not strong and promising industries. Then on the flip side, to go to the green, these are industries, and in the last 10 years of data, they're kind of hard to find everywhere. But ones where there's strong growth in the industry, and it looks like there's strong growth competitively. When you look at the Simsbury area in particular, arts, entertainment, and recreation, both were growing since 2007 better than the economy as a whole, and Simsbury was a good location for that. So that's sort of the worst and best of that. In between are the two gray quadrants, and those are important. The first one in the upper left shows companies that have, or types of industries that have a negative local share, that compared, that the industries in Simsbury grow a little slower than the same industries statewide or region-wide. But there, it's a positive industry, these are growing industries. Real estate, rental and leasing, professional scientific and technical services, you know, these are industries that are here, that are growing, and Simsbury could probably do a little better job of cultivating them. Educational services, healthcare and social assistance, arts, entertainment, and recreation, accommodation and food services. Those are things where Simsbury could do a better job with them in terms of growth. And some of them are, to be honest, like educational services, I think part of the reason that is up in that category, just to give you a sense of how this analysis works, the Simsbury's got a fairly large share of these are private sector education. So the total number is bigger, so that the percent increase is probably going to lag the national, because it's already a fairly large presence in the scale of things, without getting into info weeds that much. Then on the other, the other side is a positive local share and negative industry mix. And these are industries where nationally, it hasn't been the best time, but they've done well relatively in the Simsbury area. Manufacturing, administrative support and waste management services are basically like management consulting and support services, and they throw in waste management. I don't know, the people in the Bureau of Labor Statistics, I guess, have a sense of humor, but for some reason it shows up and everybody says, "You mean we're good at waste management? That's what we're good at." And it actually means something a little different than that. Waste management may be a strength, but also, you know, support services related to management of plants, operations, and so on are important, as well as other services. So if you look at those gray sectors, there's things that could be cultivated in Simsbury. And so, you know, there are a number of opportunities, and we'll talk a little bit more about what those mean. I just wanted to give you a sense that there was a fair amount of number crunching that would enter this. The last little bit I'll show you is when we looked at the retail sector, looking at what's called leakage and surplus analysis. And this compares, this is always hard for me to get right, this compares the amount of spending that takes place in a designated area by the people that live there compared to the amount of selling that takes place in that area by the businesses that are located there on the retail side. So if A is the estimated, let me make sure this is not me hearing this. All right. A is the estimated spending by area residents, how much they spend for each type of business service. B is the estimated sales by the area retails, how many dollars of sales of each good or service do the local establishments make within a specified drive time? And if A is greater than B, that is, if the spending by the area residents is greater than the sales in that same area, there's leakage, because they're clearly spending that money somewhere else. And if A is less than B, there's surplus, the money's coming into the area, that the spending by the residents is less than the sales by the local businesses.
Now we're back to high school math.
That's right, that's right.
Oh, no.
Yeah, this is just loose, I think, connection. So if I had to stand here and press this, we should be okay.
There are people that are watching on SCTV right now are asking if we get closer to the microphone, they can't hear you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, thank you. I hope that's, because it's going to cut.
I think it might come off.
I hope that's better for the tele, is that?
Take it off the thing, maybe?
Yeah.
Peter, that might be easier for you. There you go.
Okay, I hope that's better for the folks at home. So, so we looked at spending in three areas by drive time, a five-minute drive time in the Simsbury Center to get a sense of what the real local market is like, a 10-minute drive time, sort of more like the, beyond just the neighborhood, but looking more at the community level, and as it slowly disappears into the sunset.
Get some tape.
Hold on. This is interesting. There we go. The 30-minute drive time, which it takes in the larger, and that's the large blue or gray blob that you see. Hold on a second, let me see if I can. Oh, that was much better, right? All right.
We're getting tape for you.
There, how about that?
That looks good.
All right, I've got it lodged. So, here we go. Anyway, the results, I think the important thing to look at is if you look at these columns, again, you're not going to be able to see them specifically, but the first column shows the five-minute drive time, whether there's surplus or leakage. If there's red, that means there's surplus in those particular kinds of retail businesses. And you can see there's a fair amount of red there, and it stays, you know, it's about mixed at the 10-minute drive time, and there's still a lot of surplus at the 30-minute drive time. What that suggests, as you see on the right, is Simsbury is a successful retail hub. And we believe the success can be consolidated by increasing a residential presence in the retail areas and by complementary positioning of the North Village area, you know, where the Wagner properties are, Wheaton, Terafil, and other hamlet areas. The other thing I'd point out is that the success of the retail in this community is not an accident, that, you know, the Main Street partnership program here is, as you know, is a model program. I was in Duchess County, New York this morning at a meeting, and I explained I had to leave a little early because I was preparing to go to Simsbury, and the person who was next to me, which was a county planner, said, "Oh, I just saw a presentation on their Main Street program, they're doing really good stuff." I said, "Yeah, I only work with the best," you know. So I took credit for it. But anyway, you know, so that's, there's some real opportunities in terms of retail. And when you look at the sectors, the kinds of opportunities we're looking at is niche manufacturing and sophisticated support services, and we think that those can be supported at Herman Drive, in the North Village area, Powder Forest, the Southern Gateway and the Terafil areas, and we'll talk a bit about the locations. Specialty retail in the downtown North Village and other hamlet areas, tourism, hospitality and recreation in downtown North Village and Terafil areas, and we'll talk a bit more about that, and mixed use in the Southern Gateway, Powder Forest, downtown and North Village, and that is including residential and retail and other office uses. Because again, part of, although the retail is pretty robust here, getting more residential presence in retail areas is proving to be more and more valuable in terms of maintaining the viability of downtowns and other areas. And in terms of the site analyses, one of the things we're looking at, I'll give you a few maps. First of all, key sites for bigger footprint industrial and office uses. And this is, one of the thinking behind this is there are a number of successful small manufacturers and other kinds of businesses in the community. It's always good to think about where can they graduate to if they outgrow where they are. So it's not a question of, "Well, we're successful, we can't find anything in Simsbury, we're off to somewhere else." And it turns out that there are some real opportunities here, that if you look in the north, the lands adjacent to Dorset Landing and the North Village, you know, in terms of advanced manufacturing and research and development, I think there are opportunities there. The, one of the things to keep in mind about manufacturing in Simsbury, it is advanced technology-based manufacturing. This is not smokestack kind of stuff. You know, if you go out to, you know, the Herman Drive area and look at some of the businesses there, you know, maybe some of the buildings aren't architecturally award-winning, but they're also low-impact in terms of admissions, traffic, and that sort of stuff, and I think that's good news. Powder Forest, the holdings are a good place for startups to graduate to, there's some places that would accommodate larger footprint. And obviously, the Hartford campus and Gateway area, and one of the things we're thinking about that is possible spillover from the Jackson Labs when they open, the UConn facility that's going to be opening to the south. Key sites for retail, mixed use, hospitality, and recreation, one of the new bubbles on that map is Terafil as a recreation and arts area. Really, you know, one of the wonderful things about Simsbury, and again, as residents, you may not be aware of this, is there's a real diversity of types of hamlets. You know, that there are some communities where you've got the center, and the center is what it is, and if you don't fit in there, there's nowhere else for you to go. Simsbury's got a variety of places that can accommodate different sorts of things. There is this kind of traditional New England town center that we're located in right here. You go to Terafil, and it's more kind of a funky, potentially artsy kind of place, and with great outdoor recreation in terms of water-based activity. So, you know, really some exciting opportunities there. The downtown obviously remains the town's main activity center, the Hartford campus and Gateway, mixed use, complementing the downtown. And what I'd like to do now is talk about what, sort of, the overall assessment and what we see as the strengths and weaknesses. First of all, in terms of the existing economic base and workforce, you know, it's really astonishing in some ways. The median household income, you can't read that, but for the town as a whole, it's $114,000 according to the 2011 American Community Survey. When you look at educational attainment, the purple blob there, that's 2/3 of the circle, 2/3 of the pie, is people over 25 with a bachelor's degree or higher. And, you know, this is one of the highest I've seen in kind of a non-university town. You know, very strong. One of the things that came out, and I think it was Lisa, you brought this out, is the High Schools Project Lead the Way program, which is a major national initiative to encourage science, technology, engineering, and math programming in the high schools, and it's really quite a feather in your cap to get that, to participate in that program, and Simsbury is right there with it. So it really suggests that this is a population by education and inclination to support high-end sophisticated manufacturing and services. It's a skilled, well-educated workforce and a community whose educational system is committed to building that strength. There's a cadre of innovative companies. You know, everybody is aware of Dino Nobel, right? Because it's the first thing you see when you pull into the town. But if you go out to Herman Drive and elsewhere, you know, Acceleron, Phonon, Specialty Saw, and you can see, I did this, I was looking for interesting startup companies in the Connecticut area, you know, is there anything in Simsbury? And there is Metrum Research Group in Terafil, listed, you know, in the group. So, to me, this was one of the surprising findings, is Simsbury can compete for high-end manufacturing. And again, you're not going to, it's not going to be another Dino Nobel, you know, that large a scale, but small-scale companies that are starting up, that are growing, this is a good place for them. They've got good workforce. The other thing that's here, which we'll talk about in terms of competitiveness, is quality of life, which is a wonderful thing to have, but for companies like this, it's their workforce that makes them competitive. And what they need in order to attract workers and keep them, and keep their families happy is high quality of life. And we'll talk about that as an asset in just a second. Limited highway access, that's a bit of a disadvantage when we look at it in terms of straight retail, economic development, you know, broad-based, it's always good to be right next to an interstate highway if you're looking to do distribution, those kinds of middle-of-the-road kinds of activities. But that's not the case for Simsbury, there's a distance to go, but not as far as people usually think. There's good broadband connectivity in the development areas that we showed earlier in the maps, the green blobs show you where fiber is accessible in Simsbury at fairly high speeds, you know, the only, there's some places in Fairfield County that have got higher speed, but, you know, right around, you know, the shadows of the New York City metro area, but, you know, there's good connectivity in Simsbury, which is an important aspect of economic development when we're thinking about smaller sophisticated manufacturing and services. Good airport access, this is something everybody seems to take for granted in this town, is there's a major airport 14 miles away. And especially for the small sophisticated manufacturing services, they're doing national and global business, you know, being able to get FaceTime quickly and easily with your customers is really important, according to everything I've ever read or researched about these kinds of businesses. So the location, you know, right next to Bradley is really an asset. Disadvantages. Here's one, high cost of labor, taxes, and energy compared to areas outside the Northeast. You know, the dark things on the map to the left tend to show high wages, and you can see that, you know, Connecticut is pretty dark, and that's sort of the good news and the bad news. The bad news is it's hard to compete for low, for companies that are looking for low wages. The good news is this is an affluent area, an affluent community, and you can be successful competing for companies that pay well, which, that's good news. You know, electrical rates, you can see also it's expensive. So this is an expensive place to do business, you know, and also you could throw in taxes too. The key finding related to that is this is not going to be a place that might be able to compete with Mississippi or North Carolina for the kinds of jobs they go after. But it has its own set of opportunities. Another asset is it's part of, it's set in an active regional branding effort, you know, the idea of creating the knowledge corridor between Springfield and Hartford as a region that hosts technology businesses and universities. Oh, it's starting again there. This is important because what it does, without this kind of effort already underway, when you're thinking about, "All right, how do we sell Simsbury in terms of economic development?" Then you go, "Oh, we've got to somehow figure out how we establish ourselves in the regional marketplace in New England." Well, you can say, "We're in the knowledge corridor, we're part of the knowledge corridor, geographically just about in the middle of the knowledge corridor." And also, I would argue, and we'll make the case shortly, given the assets that this community has to work with, it's almost like this is a fundamental example of what it means to be in the knowledge corridor, the kinds of skills, workforce, and companies that Simsbury has to offer. Another strength is the capacity for expedited approvals, and, you know, here's the Simsbury Center code. The idea here is that companies in the fast-paced global economy, sophisticated companies need a fast yes or a fast no. In fact, they would prefer a fast no to a slow yes, because they, you know, they got to make the decision, they got to serve the customers. And Simsbury's had a reputation for many years that it still has to overcome, that oh, it's, this is difficult place to do business and so on. But when you talk to some of the businesses, you know, I had a nice conversation with folks at Phonon, you know, that this, that Simsbury, the town is a partner with them and is working with them and makes life easier for them. And the approval times are astonishing. I mean, we're talking for some projects, weeks, right? Which, in my hometown, the projects that they like are two years in approval, you know, and those are the ones that aren't controversial. So, you know, this is really a strength. High quality of life, you know, there it's number 50 nationally by Money Magazine. I mean, I would have thought that would have been good if it was New England or Connecticut, as I've said earlier today, but this is, nationally Simsbury is recognized as a great place to live. And again, this is important beyond just civics. I'll give you a workforce example from another area of the world that I was working in, not all that far from here. Fairly sophisticated manufacturing company, they were constantly recruiting engineers. The way they would do it, it was they would make sure the person was flying into the regional airport on a night flight. That way, they'd get them, they'd pick them up at night, get them to the hotel, and, you know, make sure they got to bed, pick them up first thing in the morning, and get them into the plant before they could see where they were. And that's honest-to-God truth, that's how they recruited. So they'd have to sell somebody on the job in the company, and then hope to God that they, once they stepped outside the plant, they'd say, "All right, I guess I can stay here." You know, Simsbury doesn't have that problem. And I mean, that, you know, we joke about it, but that's, you know, if you want to compete for high-end sophisticated manufacturing services, you got to have workforce, which means you've got to be able to attract people that could live anywhere, that have the choice of living anywhere. And Simsbury can do that. And to summarize where things are, invoking a model that my colleague Pete Mathews, who's worked on this project with me and is poised to work on phase two, created to show how markets evolve. And this is true about economic development locations. I'll walk you through the pyramid, let's just say automobiles. Inventor fills a need, Henry Ford figures out how to mass-produce automobiles, okay? Parody competitions enters and expands the market, GM and Chrysler show up, and they basically do the same thing, and the market grows. And here's the critical step, extremes enter and disregard it. You know, let's say it's Mercedes-Benz shows up, BMW making a superior quality product, and then these strange little cars from outside the United States, you know, Volkswagen, Nissan, Honda, show up, and they're, you know, they're offering a lower price. And so people can now choose between the standard model or superior and lower-priced alternatives. And what happens is polarization accelerates, you know, and it says in the bottom, "As markets mature, they polarize between superior quality and lower price, the middle offers neither and loses." So that if you're competing, you've got to take, you can compete as a low-cost location, you can compete as a high-end location, but you've got to make a choice. You know, there are plenty of examples of locations that were great for business, you know, in the early 20th century, manufacturing places throughout New England. And they lost out to the Far East that had much lower costs, or other places where they could do higher-valued activity because they had the superior location, you know, talent, university connections, global connections, and so on. So, you know, that's the situation that Simsbury is looking at, and the bad news, we'll start with that, is this is a high-cost location, you can't compete on low cost. The good news is you've got the capability to compete as a superior location for economic development. You know, high-valued enterprises, talent, university connections, global connections, you know, it's all there. So, you know, again, the potential for high-end innovation-driven development, there's a true advanced manufacturing cluster in the Herman Drive area, UConn's Engineering School is actively involved, there's strong buyer-supplier links among a few of the firms there. You can see the Jackson Labs genomic medicine facility that's going to be opening in 2014, that could spur demands for sophisticated support services that Simsbury is positioned to host. Highway access is limited, but Simsbury has ready access to Bradley Airport, less than 20 minutes away from the Herman Drive facility. The area has high quality of life, it has got very good schools, very good outdoor recreation, and very good cultural activities. We see there are opportunities for niche retail and services, including weddings, along with a host of other kinds of recreation and cultural activities. And there's also a model planning and approvals process in place that is, you know, again, attractive to companies that need to move fast and make decisions quickly, and want to be in a quality location. So, you know, part of this is thinking about, "All right, how do we sell Simsbury?" And this is putting together the core idea of this whole process. Do the research, put together the core idea that then informs the strategy and the tactics, and this is another one of Pete Mathews' models. So when we're thinking about the core idea So when we're thinking about the core idea for Simsbury, and this is draft form because the phrase is probably, looks like it's been used by another company, but it captures the idea. Simsbury innovative by nature. You know, that this is a place that's, it's both innovative, but you also have access to a natural environment that's really outstanding. The community inherently seeks to continually improve everything. And you guys probably don't realize that, because you live here every day, whether it's regulations, Main Street, there, you know, there are committees moving things forward in a way that's very progressive and very effective. It's home to a small cadre of innovative manufacturing firms. Its setting allows people to exercise their innovative instincts in a natural setting. And, you know, this idea can be tweaked in a number of different ways, creative by nature, competitive by nature, and so forth. And again, that innovative by nature, that actual phrase, we'll probably have to tweak that a little bit, but that's something we'll talk about in terms of Phase Two. But, you know, here's the idea, that this is, this is who you are. You know, that there's all kinds of interesting, high-value-added stuff that's taking place here, and it's in a very attractive setting. A warning in this process, that when we're thinking about, all right, what are the opportunities of attracting major manufacturing? This shows major industrial relocations and expansions in different time periods annually. One is from 95 to 2000, 2000 to 2005, and the last three years, 2009, 2011. And you can see the annual number of relocations for manufacturing has dropped. So the competition for them is increasingly steep. So, you know, that's one thing to be aware of. And that's also why it's important to make sure you keep the folks that you've got, because replacing them will be a lot more difficult than it used to be. But anyway, what we'd suggest is for advanced, whoops, advanced manufacturing technology, target tech companies seeking to locate to or expand in the Hartford area. You know, the target market is really going to start in the greater Hartford area, because they're people, they already are dealing with the high costs of the Northeast, they know how it works, in some cases, they're successful. But now we need to show them that Simsbury is a really interesting location for them. What are their advantages? You know, to articulate Simsbury's advantages, build regional relationships with company, the organizations that are out there pitching technology-based development and services and manufacturing, the Metro Hartford Alliance, the Knowledge Corridor, the Department for Community and Economic Development, University of Connecticut, the Center for Advanced Technology, and so on. Create a business retention and expansion program to work with companies that are already here and make sure that they've got their needs. And I'll come back to that in a second. And ensure an expedited approvals process for the targeted growth areas, just as the Simsbury Center has one, to look at the North Village, Powder Forest, and make sure that they can move quickly too. The business retention and expansion program, again, the idea is to regularly reach out to the businesses and say, how are things going? What do you need? Are there things we can help you with? And I can give you a good example of a business retention and expansion program that's pretty close by here that's very successful, and that's the Main Street Partnership, which does it for retail. And this is taking that same idea and saying, all right, let's talk about the other businesses that are in the community. They're going to have different needs than retail and downtown businesses, but they may have needs, and there should be benefits to the community of making sure these folks are well-provided for. Also, tourism, recreation, and culture is an important opportunity. Three segments, active recreation, which includes skating, water sports, biking, weddings and events, and cultural activities. Some of the key actions, explore the potential for Terrafill as a hub for outdoor recreation and related activities. Leverage the growing market for travel sports, you know, with specialized facilities like ice sheets, field houses, et cetera. You know, that's becoming, in terms of the high end, it's amazing, as I do work in different communities, and, you know, they're looking at, do we need to expand our specialized athletic facilities for travel teams, you know, for 14-year-olds, basically? And this is something that you've already seen in the area. It's worth monitoring that, and there may be opportunities. Continue event packages for various niches, including skating, hockey, weddings, water-based recreation, biking, hiking, concerts, cultural events. And again, the Main Street Partnership does that really well already, and, you know, keep on keeping on, you know, use that resource. Specialty retail and services, continue to build the Simsbury brand and complement it in the North Village and Southern Gateway areas. You know, continue the Main Street efforts, maybe do a charrette for the North Village with appropriate zoning and preapprovals. Promote mixed uses with housing in the centers and hamlets, including Simsbury Center, Wheat Hog, and again, the North Village. The draft action plan, we recommend creating an internal and external marketing program. You'll notice it says internal, because part of the audience, and this is getting to Phase Two, part of the audience for this marketing are you folks, to sort of realize and remember what it is that you've got to offer. Because it's very easy, you know, you're doing business here every day, and you're very familiar with things, to not remember the opportunities you've got and the real assets you have. So part of this process is to get everybody talking and thinking about the things that make Simsbury economically competitive. So, you know, the, part of the marketing is going to be internal. But then also, you know, we're looking at target audiences, the small to mid-size innovation-based manufacturing and services, you know, under 100 employees. That, if you would have attracted 100-employee firm, that would be huge. I mean, that's, you know, I think really you should be thinking 10, 15, 20 employees. Because first of all, I think that's more realistic of the market, and secondly, it would blend in more easily to Simsbury and create a much more diverse economic base. Better to have 10 businesses of 10 each rather than one with 100. Also, to, again, get the word out continually to developers, to tourists and visitors, because tourists and visitors sometimes own businesses. And they're having a wonderful vacation, they say, gee, wouldn't it be cool if I could bring my business here? Something to remember. And again, residents, to make sure everybody's on the same page. In terms of media, we're talking about social media, video, word of mouth with collateral material, contact with the regional economic development community and realtors, and business retention and expansion visits with the current employers. And, you know, that takes us to the sort of Phase Two and what that would involve. And there are three steps to Phase Two, and this is what originally we had proposed for that process, is first of all, to design the campaign, the internal and external campaign, put, you know, fully articulate what's the core idea, who are the target audiences, and make it happen. The original budget's $55,000. The second component of that is to create a monitoring system, to physically, you know, what's the fiscal and economic impact as this moves forward? And that would be an additional $10,000. And then finally, the execution of the campaign, which means developing like a video that would be used to promote Simsbury for these target audiences, and the other materials that physically generate them another $55,000. And again, just to give you a sense of what that involves, you know, the monitoring tool would be to track the mix of development and its potential fiscal impact, to say, all right, if we're going to do the Powder Forest area, how many acres is that? How would that change the value, and how would that then change tax revenues? To give you a sense of, you know, what are the alternatives in terms of those different options? And then the design the marketing campaign, you know, the target audiences by industry and location and key stakeholder groups, branding, positioning statement, and key messages. And we see integrating that with the work of the Main Street Partnership, because again, you know, build on that, make sure that the messages are consistent, but they also are effective for the target audiences in terms of the manufacturing, retail, and tourism-related activities. And then specifying, you know, what's the media to be used, what's the timing, and who does what? And again, these are the marketing materials themselves, the graphic elements, printed materials, digital products, including webpages, blogs, videos, social media placements, mobile applications to build relationships with appropriate target audiences. So, I think that's pretty much, you know, and what we're looking at with this process is to target behavior, both internally and externally. And there's an interesting little graphic that Pete Mathews put together. First, you know, the first step in this is awareness, making sure people are aware of what Simsbury has to offer. Getting their interest. Oh, yeah, Simsbury, that looks like an interesting place. Maybe we should go there and think about it in terms of a business location, he says as the, trial. Oh, let's go visit. Let's talk to some of the business people, see what's going on. Satisfaction. Gee, you know, I heard some good things about Simsbury and the way they handle business and the way the business community thinks of the community. Let's check it out again. We make the commitment. And then advocacy, that the satisfied businesses, and, you know, this is starting to happen in Simsbury, become advocates. And they become the marketing, the second round of marketing, is satisfied customers saying, you know, we're in Simsbury, it's great, you've got to try it. So that's what we'd see is the outcome for the Phase Two process. So that, at a fairly robust pace, is kind of what we've been doing over the last number of months and where we, what we've concluded. And again, we feel that this is really a community that's an opportunity to compete at the highest level in terms of economic development. So, be happy to take any questions, comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. We have a little bit of time for discussion, so we really appreciate it. So this is really valuable information. I think anyone who has a business in Simsbury or is thinking of doing business in Simsbury or a taxpayer should really take a look at this report. I'm just wondering if there's anything that surprised you or you found that's something that sets Simsbury apart from the other communities?
Yeah, there are a couple of things. I mean, I'll start sort of more specific to broader. The manufacturing presence, for some reason, surprised me, that that's real and enviable. And it came at the public meeting where people, I mentioned this in the television thing earlier, at the end of a public meeting, people were saying, you know, oh, there's Herman Drive out there, but you know. And so I went out and drove out there afterwards, and the companies that were there, you know, the communities would give their eye teeth to have just one of them. So that was really good news. Second, the ability of the community to move forward in terms of actually implementing an approvals process that expedites development, because that's where there's always a big breakdown, is we got this great idea, this is great, we should do it, and then for some reason, that's the thing that always is the last thing to happen and sometimes never happens, and really turns any report into a shelf-sitting document. So that's a real strength, and I think that's going to benefit this whole effort greatly. Lastly, this is a community that's got a strong leadership cadre. And I, you know, it's, because typically, when people think of leadership, they think of, oh, there's one person here that's, you know, moving things forward. There are, I don't want to say dozens, maybe that's too many, but there are a lot of people here in Simsbury that are committed to getting things done right. And that is a resource that's absolutely irreplaceable and is your real long-term competitive advantage, you know, that you can move projects along. And yeah, sometimes maybe there's, you know, heated discussions about them. But this is a community that knows how to get things done. And I think that's, you know, the biggest asset that you have in addition to the more particular ones that I've discussed.
Thank you, Peter. I'll open up for discussion. Lisa?
Peter, first, thank you so much for your excellent presentation. It's still on our website at www.simsburystrategy.com.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is, tonight, I don't think is yet, but it will be by tomorrow morning.
Excellent. And I just wanted to recognize Mark Demming. This proposal for the marketing study came out from the Economic Development Committee, and it was first brought to Mary and your budget, and then to the Board of Selectments. I want to thank you two for presenting it, because this is exactly what we need right now. The one question I had for you is, in the next phases, when you've worked with other communities that have done that, have you been able to document the value of doing that?
Yeah.
Or has it added to a community?
Well, that, what we try to do is, that's why we try to put in the monitoring system.
Right.
Is to, so that that can be tracked as going forward.
And how, but in other communities, have you seen a direct?
Yes.
And how do you measure that direct correlation from what you do to the growth?
Sure. One of the things we've done, it helps sometimes to have a longer-term relationship. For example, I've been doing work for quite a number of years in Ontario County in New York, which is just east of Rochester, and did a strategic plan that had a whole series of metrics that they follow, but also put together for them an economic dashboard, where it's every quarter, you know, they've identified, here are the things we need to track, to make sure that our strategy's on track. So it's set up so that one of their staff persons, every quarter, can update the information, which ranges from employment numbers to the number of people on social assistance, to the productivity of the agricultural sector, because those are all things that they discussed that would be important criteria.
And then just the last follow-up question. Do we have staffing in place that we can do with existing staffing, or would this require additional staffing to be effective?
That's worth a discussion. I think it might, you might want to look at either additional staffing or somehow purchasing the services for staffing, like, for example, the business retention and expansion effort. That, I think, is an important marketing device. It's easy to overlook because it's working with local companies, and it's not as exciting and as exotic as going, you know.
It's exciting to us.
Well, good, because that's an important asset, and I think that's one of the things that has to be looked at. Also, in putting together the marketing materials, identified who's going to manage that whole process when it's done. You know, there, I have some thoughts about, there may be partners you could use in that process, but we need to, I see who you're looking at right away. I didn't want to tip my hand, but, you know, there are some assets this community already has that could be mobilized in that effort.
And that, would that be part of your planning going forward?
Yes.
How we figure out who's going to, okay.
Yeah, you know, the responsibilities and timing are really key to this.
Correct.
To making it work.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Yeah, Sean.
So if we said go today, how long would this take to implement?
I think we're talking about six months in the original proposal, to get all the material put together and done.
You feel like spending money tonight, Mr. Austin?
It was an if. That was if.
You had me up until adding town staff.
Well, we can talk about that.
Other questions?
Okay. Mary, I, yeah, that's great. Measurables in the economic impact you talked about, but in terms of the materials you're creating, do you also provide that kind of, you know, click-throughs and
Yeah.
...access that folks are making to what's being provided?
Yes. Yeah, this, there's some slides after, so I don't want to take up too much time, that just gives you an example of a system that one of our colleagues, through Pete Mathews and Associates, put together for this pharmaceuticals industry, where they're able to identify who's responding to their email ads, what they're looking at, and what they're interested in. And we would do the same kind of thing, the same kind of tracking.
I would be interested in seeing some of that in terms of analyzing how we would be, what we would be getting from that, and the success you've had in doing that as well. And just wanted to comment, and having been at the presentation at the library and your comment about, it starts right in our community, and that was pretty much what came out of Main Street's program with the Dornberg Group when they were doing their marketing. That is, the residents were the first folks to educate, and I think that's pretty much resonating here as well.
Good.
Well, there's been some really good synergy. We panned it over all the marketing materials that we had done on behalf of Preserve of America, and that had been exactly what Pete had been pitching. So, you know, there could be a way to work, as we're revamping all of our materials with the realtors, with the town, with everybody, a way to integrate that and maybe break some of that down.
Well, it is interesting to hear the synergies. I mean, North Village businesses are organizing right now. In fact, they had, they were at their initial meetings yesterday, and they're very excited to plug into a sense of place, such as what we did with the Simsbury Center and the Wheat Hog Study that was just completed, and now the North Village is getting excited and rallying. Herman Drive and a lot of, you know, the components that you mentioned are already organizing as we speak. So that's really exciting to see how everything's fitting together and leveraging all those businesses as well. So thank you. Any other questions? Hi, did you have anything additional?
I just wanted to add that, I think one of the things I said this afternoon was that you're exactly right, that we're piecing together the, not only Town Center, but the Wheat Hog Study, the Terrafill information, the North Village, and it's sort of like stitching together the quilt, you know? So one village at a time, we're trying to do that, not adversely impact the residential areas, no question. But I think, looking through the various slides and the report itself, which is on our website too, by the way, today, if you folks want to see it, it really helps to knit that all together and to go forward that way. Obviously, we're going to be looking for some resources to fund Phase Two. We originally had thought we would be lucky enough to get a STEAP grant to do that, we didn't. So Phase One is as far as we've gotten so far, but I think you've seen from some of the things that Pete has shown, where Phase Two would go. Some of those questions will be answered, and I'm sure they'll be asked again during the next budgeting cycle. So we're very excited about proceeding forward and making this really work for the town to help knit all these different villages together. I think it's a great, great way to do it.
Just one final question. We have a lot of really valuable information, particularly We have a lot of really valuable information, particularly for small businesses that couldn't afford to buy this themselves, and is there a way to get a one-page summary that we could send to the businesses and then have them link back? And maybe that's something, Peter, you can help us formulate?
Sure.
Because there's so much here, if we could just send a one-page summary that says, if you like this or looking for this, here's where to get the rest of the information.
Okay.
That'd be helpful. Okay, great. Any other questions? Okay, we'll adjourn our special meeting and reconvene in about 10 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks. That's great. All right, so, um, I didn't call it, I loved it.